Jones?
Here.
Mayor Nguyen.
Hello. Josh McIntosh.
Thank you. Check, check. All right. Good evening. Thank you. I just wanted to say that, I mean, obviously, I'm speaking before I see the presentation, which is not my original intention, but if this is the only chance we're going to have to speak, I'm speaking. Like a plethora of other residents, we'd like to be able to vote for our mayor again. I don't know if anything is solid. I know we're discussing districts tonight, but I'm not sure about the other ramifications. We'd really love to choose our mayor rather than it being selected by the panel here. Nothing against my honorable panel, but it's definitely something I think a huge amount of residents would like to keep as an original value and something that we get to do is elect our mayor. So that's it. Thank you.
Twenty floors.
Good evening. I too would like to, I guess, reiterate that we do need to be able to vote for our own mayor. As far as districts, I'm not sure if most of you or any of you read the information that I've put out, but I've been studying districts since around 2000. And I put the information forward to the city, to the council members, to the community members as well. Lot of information in there. Lot of years have been covered, lot of reasons to have districts. But while I'm definitely for districts, I think everybody knows I'm pro-district, I really wasn't looking to have districts kind of brought into us the way it was brought in. And, you know, I get all that, understand what the California's Voter Writing Act has to say, et cetera. But I don't have all my information here tonight, but I will be attending one of the workshops, I guess, I've slated for December, and I'll have most, if not all, my information there. But again, I believe it is important that we don't give up one for the other. We can have both. We can have everything that we need to do if we listen to what the voters have to say, and we really haven't done that in the past, but hopefully we'll change some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before we move right in, I just want to tell the two that spoke that you are able to put another card for the regular session. All right. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As I reported at the last meeting, we have Mr. David Ely with us today. He is the demographer that the city has entered into a contract with to do the work related to establishing the district election system in conjunction with the court settlement that the city of Garden Grove entered into with the plaintiffs. And so David is here at the last meeting. I think I gave sort of a general overview of the extensiveness of the community engagement work that David's going to be involved in, and so I think he wants to, he will be walking us through that work and the schedule, what it means, and what's going to be coming over the next two, three months. So with that, I wanted to introduce David Ely. He's with Compass Demographics. And David, I'll turn the microphone over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a little PowerPoint that is going to go through to just kind of describe how I see the process that we're going through and what we have planned at the moment. A very important part of this process is the community participation. And I like to do this in two rounds with two types of meetings in each round. I make myself available for individual informational meetings. These can be for small individuals or small groups, up to about six people, possibly more than that. They are basically confidential meetings between myself and members of the public who wish to provide input or to learn about the process. They can have access to my tools to develop, begin to develop their own proposals or to examine alternatives and things like that, or just to ask me questions and learn about the process and look at the data that I have. In addition to that, we have public informational meetings. The initial round of meetings are intended primarily to allow people to provide input into how the city of Garden Grove functions as neighborhoods, communities. We're not going to be looking terribly much at proposals in the initial round of things. I will have some sample proposals so that people can have an idea of what we're talking about, but those proposals will not be the focus of the meetings. The focus of the meetings would be, first of all, to provide information to the public about the process, but more importantly, to do a mapping workshop where people can define what they consider to be neighborhoods, how they believe the neighborhoods connect to each other, what kind of geography within the city is important, both in terms of connecting people and dividing people, what sort of factors they think would be important in designing representational districts. We'll also have public hearings in front of the council, at least one in the middle of the process after the first round, in which I'll present a preliminary report with some draft proposals to the council in January. And then, at the end of the process, I'll present a final report along with recommendations to the council in, I believe, March 22nd is the date that we have targeted. Generally, looking at districts, we have legal requirements, we have a lot of geographic information that we look at. I look at political participation. One of the things that we have to pay attention to is the potential for vote dilution, and political participation is an important aspect of examining that. We need to look at the demographic characteristics of the city, both in terms of the ethnicity and age and citizenship, those sorts of things. Also look at a number of socioeconomic characteristics that can give some ideas of potential communities of interest within the city. And of course, the public input is very important. In terms of geography, what I'm trying to find in the workshops that we do, and something that I'm looking at throughout this process, are my general geographic criteria. So these, I have five points here that I think are really important aspects of how geography needs to be considered in this. So we're looking at neighborhoods or communities that should be kept together. We're looking at neighborhoods or communities that share common interests that might join them so that they might make sense to be put together. We look at physical geography of the city, things that can act as barriers between districts, things that prevent people from moving freely or that might define areas where people don't interact a whole lot. And then we want to look at communities that have opposing interests or strong dissimilarities that might make it not reasonable to have them together in districts. And we want to look at important geographic locations within the city, things that have an impact on their neighbors, things that are a focus for community organization, all of those kinds of things. Controlling the whole process is sort of two sets of legal criteria. Federal law, there's three main points. The one single clear rule about redistricting or districting is that the districts have to be equal in terms of total population. That needs to be based on the most recent census total population data unless there is some more reliable data available. In general, there's not anything more reliable than that. Second thing is that both the Fourteenth Amendment and the Federal Voting Rights Act protect minority voting rights. Nothing that we can do can have a discriminatory purpose. We can avoid a discriminatory purpose quite easily by not having one. The thing that's more complicated is that we also have to avoid vote dilution, and vote dilution does not have to be intentional. And so we have to look at the results of what we're doing to avoid the possibility of vote dilution. The Fourteenth Amendment also contains the Equal Protection Clause, which the courts have interpreted to mean that you can't focus exclusively on race, or race can't predominate in the analysis. So while we have to avoid vote dilution, anything that we do that's based on race to avoid vote dilution has to be done very carefully and specifically and in a way that's justified, that it doesn't violate the equal protection, race predominating. State law is much less specific than federal law and does not, doesn't have the long history of litigation to flesh it out. State law includes basically these four bullet points: topography, geography, cohesiveness, contiguity, integrity, and compactness of territory, and community of interest. Those things really all break down to the same factors that I talked about in the general districting criteria. They're not really specific about anything, but the things that were included in that earlier slide primarily cover all of this. When we're drawing the districts, I carry along some demographic data so that any proposal that we look at will have a breakdown of these kinds of data. So we have the total population, which has to be equalized among five districts. And I have the ethnic breakdowns of that total population. We also look at the voting age population and the citizen voting age population. The citizen voting age population is especially important when considering minority vote dilution under the Federal Voting Rights Act. In order to make a claim under Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, a minority group has to be able to be a majority of the voting age citizens within a district, or they have to be able to show intentional discrimination. If you can't show either one of those two things, then you can't make a Federal Voting Rights Act claim. So that's a number that we have to pay a lot of attention to. In terms of evaluating vote dilution, I like to look at current registration and participation in most recent elections. So we'll look at the November 2012 and November 2014 election. This data is blank on the table because I'm collecting it still at this point, but there will be a total number of registered voters, Spanish surname share of those voters, and Asian surname share of those voters. The surname methodology is not great for identifying individuals, but there are pretty good methodologies for looking at the share of a group of people who fall into ethnicity. In the process of doing this, my computer will include geographic data showing the street and highway grid. We have to use census geography because that's what the census data is broken down by. Look at precincts. I look at the parcel geography, any kind of geographic information system layers that the city has. We'll try and include in the data that people are looking at can be used as reference for anything that people... We'll also look at school district information, attendance areas. I like to look at a series of socioeconomic characteristics. I have a map here that's just showing the distribution of median household income by block group. I'll have lots of maps like this as we go forward. I always use a color scheme that is cold to hot, so anything that is a blue number, a blue color is a low number, anything that is a red number, a red color is a high number. And you can, I mean, the actual breakdowns don't matter all that much when looking at most of the distribution and the contrast that I'm primarily interested in. The city has put up a website, a webpage for the districting process, and we'll be adding things to that as we go forward. And so I have a little shot of what the looks like now and the URL for that site. Another thing that will be put up and will be available to people is what they call Public Participation Kit. And that will include a map that shows the census block groups within the city. And then there's a couple of worksheets in a spreadsheet that will allow people to assign each of these little individual pieces of geography to a district, and it will create a report that's similar to the reports that I create. And so what I have shown there is a sample of what the base map would look like. And then we have a spreadsheet that has a column at the beginning where you can assign, you can put in a district number. In the spreadsheet, everything is locked except for the green colored cells where people can put information into. It also includes all of the demographic data and everything that needs to go into the reports. It's not really broken down in a way that's particularly useful for people to look at. It's mostly there just for computing the reports. And then, once you've done your assignment, it'll create a report that looks something like, looks something like this, that has the breakdowns of all the same pieces of data that I said I will be carrying along in my reports. And then there will be a description page where a person can put information about, you know, themselves, the contact information, anything that they want to say about the plan that they're submitting. So people will be able to submit plans either by using this. They can also submit plans just by drawing things on a map and sending it to us. They can work on plans in the individual meetings with myself. That's the way that people can have the best access to the tools and be able to really draw districts at the lowest level, using the same software, the same procedures as I do. Now, and then at this first round of public meetings, we're going to have this group exercise that I sort of described somewhat earlier, but we'll have an informational presentation, which is similar to this PowerPoint with a little bit more detail. And then we'll have work groups, people sitting around tables identifying these kinds of things, as I described earlier. And then at the end of that process, people will be able to stand up and make statements as they wish or just describe what they did in their groups. All of the information from those will be photographed and be part of what I'm looking at when I draft my initial round of proposals that will be in the preliminary report. I believe that that is all my PowerPoint, so if anybody has any questions...
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So first, can we make that PowerPoint available online on our website? And also, since we are inviting folks in different language communities, are we going to be ready and how will we be ready to engage with those folks? Is there a method for folks to indicate that they need interpreting service? And also, can we get translations on that PowerPoint as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to the council member. We're in the process of doing all of that translation, so we have all of that information in various languages. As Ms. Stipe indicated earlier, I think we passed out information about some initial scheduling that everybody should have when you walked in, and we're going to be updating all that information with, I think, four different languages, getting that out in the community. We're also going to be posting this information in various public places throughout the city, schools, if we can do it, recreation centers, community buildings, any place that people would like us to get information. We're going to do that. I believe we're also going to be, very importantly, including some of this information in water bills, so it goes out throughout the whole community. So, for example, if somebody doesn't have access to social media or a computer, it's a more extensive way of getting information out, you know, all the water bills that go out in the city of Garden Grove. So, a lot more to come on that, so.
And it's going to the different language presses as well, media? Different, yes? Okay, great. I'm really interested in this Participation Kit. It seems really awesome, and I'm wondering, how do folks get a head start on that or do they request it from you, Mr. Eli?
Yeah, it will be available to download on the website. It's probably going to be a week or so before I have all of the information put together for it. Still building the initial data set. But yeah, it should be available on the website. I believe that there will be something on the website where people can sign up, to be on a list to get information about things.
Great, that's great. You know, I really encourage our community to get involved in this process and those students, if we have any students who are in civics classes across our city, I encourage those high school civic students to also download that kit and get engaged and perhaps, you know, create a map that is fair, and you would be running for one of those districts in the future. All right. Thank you. Looks like we're just a couple minutes behind. And also, one more thing, was that on Channel 3, the study session that we just had?
Not live on Channel...
Not live on Channel 3?
I'm sorry, yes, it is on Channel 3.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful, great. Just want to make sure that's all captured and everything.
Yeah, I'll comment, as I mentioned during our agenda review earlier this morning, Mr. City Manager. It's very important that the, not just that we send out the message to a lot of people, but how we send the message out. The content of the message that's sent out need to, you know, let the public know that this is a very important, and perhaps this is the most important things that ever happened in Garden Grove. And so their participation is really crucial. So that way, you know, people will understand the magnitude of this redistricting and get involved in it. I'm worried that if they do not understand the importance of this exercise, they may not get involved simply because they are busy or this or that, and we are doing this during the, you know, holiday season, so people are not focused on, you know, civil services. So please craft the message so that people understand the, you know, the importance of this exercise.
Right. Councilman, let me just add, yes, we're going to pay attention closely to that. I think we're going to be, we also talked this morning about giving this a prominent place on our webpage so it's easy for people to find. They go online, they want to download one of the kits, something like that. It's going to pop up right for them on the webpage. So clearly, it's very important. We want as many people to participate as possible.
Okay, let's move right into our Housing Authority meeting. Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Commissioner Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Nguyen?
Yes. All right. Do we have any oral communications for Housing Authority?
I don't have any cards for housing.
Okay, thank you. We have some consent items?
We have two consent items, the Housing Authority status report for October 2015 and the minutes from the October 27, 2015 meeting.
I'll move them.
Taking.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
Chair Nguyen?
Yes. Any matters from members or director? Being hearing them?
Ms. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Just to make sure we're complying with the Brown Act, can we make sure that there's no oral comments or communications for Housing Authority?
There are none.
Thank you.
And also, before we adjourn, the next regular Housing Authority meeting will be held Tuesday, December 8th, not January 26th. That's Tuesday, December 8th, right here at the Courtyard Center. All right? Okay, we're going to January Housing Authority. And then, if there's oral communications, please hand it in at this time. We'll take oral communications for the successor and sanitary district as well as our regular city council meeting. Yeah. You know, I also want to note that the parties that will be speaking on item, the item for consideration, 7A, I will call those folks to speak right before that item. All right. I'm convening the city council meeting now. Madam Clerk?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Here.
Councilmember Fawn?
Here.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Nguyen?
Hello. All right. I'd like to ask Ms. Kim Hoy to please lead us in invocation and also the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we seek your blessing of our meeting this evening. We are grateful for what we are experiencing in Garden Grove, the strength of our business, and the comfort of our community. In the midst of our good fortune during this Thanksgiving season, do not forget our neighbors and other parts of the world who are suffering and in need. Assist the city councils as they strive to improve, save this community, give them the direction they need as they face our time.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Robin Mercario?
Good evening, council. Robin Mercario, lifelong resident of our great city. I just want to talk about a couple of things. I look forward to seeing what the discussions are with regard to the Rusty Skeleton. We all have identified that that is a blight on the city. I think we would like to see it developed, but we're all very, very tired of waiting. Just one little public notice, the palm trees, the leaves, they don't go in the brown, they're not recyclable, they don't decompose. The brown palm leaves need to go in the black trash can. Just, you know, if you're wondering why your brown trash can is not being picked up, it's because you put palm leaves in there. They do not disintegrate. They don't become part of the compost. I look forward to seeing the push cart derby, which is our little annual thing over in West Garden Grove. We all love that. I look forward to participating in the district mapping. I look forward to city council districts. I think that having five districts is going to be a better representation. I think that as other cities choose their mayor from those districts, that'll work just fine. The council members are, the mayor basically is just one vote like the rest of you. As your representative for Orange County mosquito and vector control, I wanted to give you a quick update. There have been 86 West Nile virus cases. Those are the people that have been hospitalized, and we've had four deaths associated with West Nile virus in the county. We've had four in Garden Grove. We've also had in Garden Grove four cases of flea-borne typhus, and 14 countywide. The council members are, the mayor basically is just one vote like the rest of you. As your representative for Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, I wanted to give you a quick update. There have been 86 West Nile virus cases, those are the people that have been hospitalized. And we've had four deaths associated with West Nile virus in the county. We've had four in Garden Grove. We've also had in Garden Grove, four cases of flea-borne typhus, so, and 14 countywide. So I would suggest that you, that just the public stay away from any wild animals. That means any rats, any squirrels, any possums, because they carry fleas, lots and lots of fleas, and these fleas can carry this disease. So do not feed wild animals and do not feed the feral cats, because they carry this typhus. We also have, in the county, two new invasive mosquitoes. These mosquitoes are, one is the Asian tiger mosquito and the other is the yellow fever mosquito. They're very tiny little mosquitoes, they, they kind of look like, they're smaller and they have like stripes on them. That's how you can discern them between that and your common mosquito. They love container pots, is where they like to breed. And those little, little kind of bamboo lucky plants are one of their favorite places to breed. And you will know, if you have these mosquitoes in your home, they are day biters, they are very aggressive. And they like to hang around, you know, grab your ankles and knees and stuff. And they breed quickly and you're very difficult to get rid of. So if you see any of these mosquitoes we are working on, there was an area in Garden Grove, over in the Harbor area that we have been working on, you know, we started a quarter diameter, we've gone out to a mile, and we're going door to door trying to control it. It has been in LA County for a number of years, and it has finally arrived in Orange County. So if you see it, I would like you to call Orange County Mosquito Vector Control at 714-971-2421. And in closing, I would like to encourage everyone to buy in Garden Grove, because we're all thinking about doing our shopping. And the city has a fabulous website for that, there's a program, so go, go to the city website and have a look at the Buy in Garden Grove program. And in, I, as I say, I look forward, on the city website also, the, the public is encouraged to participate in the creation of districts. So please go there. We just saw a wonderful presentation that you can actually have a participation kit, kind of help, help the demographer come up with a map. So I'm looking forward to that. And in closing, I just wanted to say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh, Mr. McIntosh?
Good evening again. With the holidays coming, I just want to encourage everybody to buy local. Robin, I'm seconding you on that. This Saturday at the Black Umbrella Art Studio on Main Street, they're having a Holiday Gift Bazaar with homemade crafts. That's from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Like to encourage everyone, our community, to come out and check that out. And I was going to speak on the district elections, but I'm just looking forward to my little kit that's available. Thank you for asking to put that online as soon as possible, look forward to that, thank you.
To Tony Flores?
My name's Tony Flores. I just wanted to do a little revisit on the Take on Hate resolution. Recently, there were some Islamic extremists, Muslim extremists that had committed some horrible acts out there in, in France. What's interesting about that is that Ms. Gonzalez, a student at the Cal State Long Beach, was, was killed in those attacks, you probably heard about that? And the reason I bring up the Take on Hate resolution, I went on earlier today, there's not a word mentioned about this on this particular website. Pretty interesting. I mean, we're, we're taking on hate according to this organization, but they're not actually condemning those actions of those folks that did that over there. So I think we need to maybe contact these folks, because the City of Garden Grove resolution is on that website. So they're going to be using our name, they might want to know that we don't tolerate any of that stuff either. I mean, we, if we're going to take on hate, let's take on hate and let's not dice it up only for their own purposes, but we need to take a look at this. So this is our resolution that we passed, what in April. And not a word on that website, talking about condemning those actions that happened, killing a Southern California student. I'd ask you to please take a look at that. Speaking of resolutions, there was another resolution that was passed recently regarding the circumstances involving elected public officials, and in particular, section 6254F of the government code. What's interesting about that is that this resolution wasn't exactly necessary, I mean, it looks good, it looks like we're trying to do something, but in reality, the law is the law. And without the, somebody from the city, city hall being able to articulate or demonstrate why certain things are exempt or why they're not, this law comes into play. So we didn't really need the resolution, although we, it maybe makes it easier for us, but the law is the law. And speaking of the resolution, that resolution came about because we were trying to get information regarding a police report dated September 30th, 2015, regarding our mayor. That has actually been sent out to the, the Orange County DA's office, and they're investigating that right now. But that should have come from either our council or our city attorney or our city manager. One of the things that's on there has to do with the, our mayor allegedly waving around a resolution that appeared to have been altered. And let me read one of the government codes. Every officer having the custody of any record, map or book, or of any paper or proceeding of any court filed or deposited in a public office or placed in his or her hands for the purpose is punishable by imprisonment pursuant to the subdivision of age, section 1170 of the Penal Code for two, three or four years. If, as the whole or any part of the record, map, book, paper, proceeding, or paper, the officer willfully does or permits any other person to do any of the following, steal, remove or secrete, destroy, mutilate or deface, and here's where it gets important, alter or falsify. So that's at the DA's office right now. Might be the first time in Garden Grove history where we have two pending cases with consecutive mayors at the DA's office under investigation. Not a real proud moment for our city, but I hope we take a look at that and look at our actions in the future. Our city clerk was kind enough to pass around a letter dated January 2002 from the former mayor regarding flooding. Now, El Nino is coming, we're hearing all kinds of things that are coming up right now. This, I think we need to address, I did have a, a talk with Mr. Bill Murray, who, by the way, is a wealth of information, another bright spot in, in city hall, a very good man. Him and I don't always agree on things, but we're able to discuss it. But we did talk about this. Now, this mayor, this particular mayor put this out after, after our claims were denied. And here's, here's my flood file, by the way. It's got the hydrology report from 1987 from the county and the July 1995 study from the city. It's in here. Very interesting reading. And I read all of it, because I ended up representing myself. But that was in 95. In 2002, the mayor puts this, the then mayor puts this out and says that the flood control channel in Garden Grove and Orange County's been fixed. Remember, they denied our claims in 95, and now he's fixing something that they had nothing to do with. However, be that as it may, we do have some issues and there may be some outstanding work that needs to be done. I understand about $8 million is going to be needed to complete this work. Whatever we can do to help Mr. Murray and his staff secure that, or our council members secure that, let us know, we'd be happy to help. But it is coming. We need to, do need to take a look at this, because if our homes flood again, then I guess we're going to have to sue and do all that nonsense, which we don't want to get into. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, people of Garden Grove. I'm David Terry Lothornborn, resident of this here city for 52 years. I lived at 12251 Hampton Avenue. And the last time I attended a council meeting, there was a, a mention of water shortage. And I think as, we still have the water shortage, don't we? Well, seven days a week, the water runs down the gutter from the hotels in Chapman and Harbor and goes down Browrow all the way down the street, seven days a weeks, including Saturday and Sunday. That's waste. We don't need it. We, I'd like to put it in my yard. My grass is brown. I'd like to have green lawns again, but maybe we'll get some rain this year. The other thing that I, I want to bring up is our laws. There seems to be, very difficult for people to follow the laws. We put them out, few people represent us, and you vote on them and you approve them, and then it comes time to apply them, and you only apply them to people you really want. You don't apply them to everybody. Equal opportunity, the Bill of Rights, it says, "We, the people." It doesn't say, "We, the government." "We, the people." When are we going to wake up and save our country? It's in dire need of saving. We're broke. The city of Garden Grove is broke, we're in debt. And debt is not something I want to be in. I'd like to be back to where it was 2005, when I had a couple bucks in my bank account. I don't have it now. I had to spend it, attorney fees. A family member of mine got in a little trouble, and $40,000 later, I'm broke. So, when are we going to wake up and start using the law as written or changing it so that we don't have to apply for it? Thank you.
Charles Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. One of the items on the agenda tonight is discussing the Galleria project. Now, one thing that puzzles me is, what is the cause of the delay in this project going forward? Yes, we have the option of tearing the whole thing down and starting over from scratch, but what does that benefit the city? I just wonder if the purpose of going forward with the project was being delayed because of the approval of various city ordinances and requirements that are holding this thing up. I think that may be worth looking into to see if our planning department needs to speed things up to get this thing going. Just a thought. This week, we will be sitting down to our tables, to a dinner, and commemorating our thanks for all the benefits that our society provides for us, as well as what we provide for ourselves. I think it's totally appropriate that at that time, we think not just of our families and not just of our neighborhoods or our cities, but think of our nation as a whole. And we need to give thanks and put into our prayers, if that's our personal choice, for those who serve us every day, 24 hours a day, all of our police and fire department and other services, people that put their lives on the line for us to protect us and keep us safe. And for all of those serving in the military, no matter where they are in any part of the world, that are putting their lives on the line, again, to protect our security here, especially with the recent events in Paris, it's all the more important that we really give our thoughts to them. Thank you.
Thank you. And then there's a card from Mr. Bill Grant, which I'll call you up before item 7A. And if there are some other parties in regards to item 7A, please turn in your card so I know that you'd like to speak. Any members like to respond to comments? Okay.
I have a question. Responding to the water on Chapman and Harbor, if there is a situation, could we alert Public Works for the gentleman who spoke on Chapman, water running down the street, what, what that's in context or what reference that is? So could we follow up on that, see if there's an issue or problem?
Councilman will follow. Sir? Sir?
Okay.
You're out of order, the question is for our staff.
Whatever street he identified, if there's running water, could we just check it out?
Yeah, Councilman, we'll have staff talk to the gentleman and, and make sure we check into that.
Thank you.
I would like staff to give us a report on the flood control channel, what remain to be done and what the cost. So if, I understand this, Mr. Flores just brought it up today, so perhaps staff can report to us at the next council meeting.
We can, we can certainly do that, Councilman.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to move into our presentations?
Yes, we have a presentation by Fire Chief Schultz regarding El Nino.
If I, and if I could, Mayor, members of council, at the last council meeting, we had a discussion about the El Nino. A lot of us are thinking about it, concerned, cities all around Southern California are preparing for it. And so we've asked the, I think at your request at the last meeting, we have Fire Chief Schultz, who is on point for the city's coordination of our efforts, working closely with our police department and our public, Public Works Department, Bill Murray and his staff. And so they've been collaborating, and the Fire Chief's going to give us an update on their, on their preparations to date and some advice to the public. So I'll turn it over to the Fire Chief.
Thanks. Good evening, Council, Mayor and council members. I'm Tom Schultz, your Fire Chief for your fire department. And I'd like to just take a little bit of time, as the city manager said, to just discuss where we're at as far as our preparation for the El Nino and what, what we have been done in preparing for this and what our intentions are to respond in the event that we do have some flooding within the city itself. So I want to start out with just a little background with what El Nino is all about, is that it, it is a reoccurring event that can happen every seven, seven to 10 years or so. It doesn't exactly bring a bunch of rain, but the experts right now anticipate that the El Nino event this, this time has a high probability of bringing record rain. That being said, I'll say there's record rain and we get through the winter season and there's not much rain at all. But right now, the experts say that there could be a high probability of record rain, and that's what we're preparing for, and that's kind of what we're in the business of, of preparing for the worst case scenario and hoping for the best. So basically, it is caused by a weather event, it's caused by the warming of the seas, basically at the equator. And as the seas warm up, as the trade winds slow down, cool air, cool air moves down into the northern hemisphere and primarily into the California area, and it creates more rain than we normally get. There's about a 95% chance of having this event take place, and, and those numbers will fluctuate from the low 90s up to 100%, but we're certainly that we are going to have some sort of event this year. The last event we had that struck hard, or at least they're saying is equivalent to what we may see this year, is the event that took place in 1997. And if you were a resident of Garden Grove in 1997, or even in Orange County, you remember that we did have some flooding, not only at the coastal areas, but also within the community of Garden Grove. So we're using that as our model to make sure that we're prepared if an event like that happens again, that we're ready to react appropriately. What you have there on the, on the PowerPoint is a map of the city, and it takes in the historical data of where we're prone to flood and what type of flooding could be expected. So if you look at that, if we look along the Santa Ana River area, we have an area that's in red diagonal lines where there's a 1% chance of significant flooding in that area. What that means is that's if we have a 500 or 1,000-year flood, that is what it would look like. Literally, we could have six inches of water all the way to where we stand right now. That would be the Santa Ana River basically overrunning its banks. More than likely, what took place in 97, if nothing had been changed, is we would have some localized flooding in the west end of town, as well as some in the center of town. And on that map, it indicates in the red straight lines, as well as some red dots as to where we had some regional flooding that took place. Basically, I want to just outline the four steps that we've approached in managing this, this event or the El Nino potential event. And this is the same process we do when we look at earthquakes or any other potential risk the city has, is we take this type of approach. And we look at it- And we look at it in preparation. What can we do as city staff to, to reduce or be prepared for the event? We monitor what takes place. We're obviously ready for the response. And then we're also ready for the recovery. And I think that's a big piece, is we have to have that preparation, ready for the event, but also ready for what happens after it happens. It's kind of the bookends of a disaster. And so, we're looking at all four of these assets, or the, all four of these situations to make sure we're prepared. So, starting out with the preparation itself, is as, as a city, we've been doing citywide flood planning collaboratively. All the different departments have been working together to formulate a citywide plan for how we respond to flooding within the city. And we have a very comprehensive plan that all the, all the different departments within the city would work on, or work within, and respond in the event of flooding. We have a, we have updated our evacuation and shelter plan. We have a partnership with the school districts, in which we can use different school facilities throughout the city to shelter our, our citizens if necessary. If an area became flooded, we have a place to relocate them temporarily while we can resolve the issue. We're working on the education piece. If you go to the website, both the city website and the fire department website, there's information that's available now, that'll outline everything that's going on as far as El Nino, and what our citizens can do to prepare themselves for it. And we're also in the process of putting together a PSA with Channel Three, so that there's some media that can come out and kind of let our citizens know what they can do to be prepared. And that's the big part of it, where they can get sandbags, and what can they do to make their home safe. Infrastructure-wise, the city has been working on their infrastructure since the last flood. There's been forty-three million dollars' worth of infrastructure repair, or improvements to our drainage system through the Public Works Department. The crews of the Public Works are constantly working on, working on the streets and improving the drainage throughout the city. And we're on a regular basis, looking at the storm drains to make sure they're clear, make sure there's no debris in there. And in some cases, our police department has been in the storm drains, actually removing some people that are living down in the storm drains, so that we have, we have drains that are clear, and also not people at risk in the case it rains. Our city emergency operations center, we've been doing citywide drills, or preparatory drills, working towards being prepared if something happened, how we would activate and respond as a city. We work closely with the operational area, which is the county-wide disaster management system. Our city is one of many cities in the county that works with the operational area, and we have a good relationship with them. And many of our plans piggyback on the back of those plans, so that we have a regional approach if something takes place. And all of our city staff is currently being trained in both what we call NIMS, the National Incident Management Systems, and SIMS, the State Incident Management Systems, requirements as well. So, all of your staff is trained in how to manage these things, through the basic principles of what we call Incident Command System. And then lastly, we have things that are available to the community through our sandbags, that are available at three of our fire stations. Our Fire Station Two, which is on Gilbert and Chapman. Our Fire Station Three, on Trask and Harbor. And our Fire Station Four, which is on Valley View and Chapman. And citizens can pick up ten sandbags, fill them up with sand, all the stuff's there, if they need them, as part of that personal preparation to get ready for an event like this. Monitoring. Once it does start raining, and we expect to see rain kind of in the rainy season, which is gonna be, or we're kind of in it right now, so November, December, and the first of the year is when we anticipate having the rains. We use the operational area monitoring. They do a lot of that monitoring for us, and forward that information to us, so countywide. We have a countywide approach when we expect to have severe rain. And based on that, there's certain things we do within the city to kind of ramp things up, or increase our awareness to be prepared for that rain. The police and fire department, they patrol our flood control channels. The police department would look in the channels to make sure that any of our homeless population that wouldn't be in the channels. The fire department would, would then in turn monitor the channels and some of the roadways in which we, we may anticipate flooding to make sure it's safe. And then Public Works is always out there as well, checking on our, our storm drain system to make sure it's in effect. So, we go into the monitoring mode, and then we're able to go into our next mode, which is the response mode. When we're talking about response, all of our first responders throughout the city, both police and fire, have been going through additional training, preparing for the, a water rescue or a flooding event. Fire department personnel have, right now, in the process of receiving that additional training, which basically is how to rescue people from flood control channels, or just in standing flooding water if a neighborhood became inundated with water. The Public Works is also a part of that response piece, and if we had flooding, you could contact the city, and we would rapidly get somebody out there to deal with that flooding, or at least start mitigating it. Now, one of the challenges is if we just have regional flooding, and there's just more water, then there's a place to put it. We could have flooding for some period of time, and we'd have to wait for it to subside before we did that. That's why that shelter plan is so part, important, as part of our response plan as well. And then lastly, the fourth step is the recovery piece. And that's where, as a city, we're working at having our building officials being ready to quickly go out and do damage assessment. That's when something happens, whether it's an earthquake or a flood, that we can quickly assess the level of damage to our internal infrastructure, as well as other infrastructure, so that we can quickly put in for reimbursement through federal or state funds if a disaster needs to be declared. So, we're trying to, to, like I said, bookend the problem with preparation planning, but also have a plan for recovery in the case it happens, so that we can recover the cost if a region declares a disaster or something such as that. So, that's really my, my real brief presentation. I just wanted to let you know that the city staff, fire department, and police department, Public Works are, are keeping a handle on this. We're watching it very carefully. And there'll be more information coming out that's not, that is currently on the website, and there'll be some additional stuff for the public to look at and get information as well.
Thank you very much. Great job. Very comprehensive.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor and members of council, if I could just piggyback on a couple things that the chief has mentioned. So, you know, when, as we prepare for very serious events to happen, this, all of this information the chief is talking about is really, really important, because in the case of a serious incident, the chief will, I'm sure, agree with me, we're, you kind of will be on your own for the first, you know, first days of an incident to happen. We can't rely on the federal government, the state government, and so this is why our local government preparations are so important. The other thing we're gonna be doing to the council members is, will, the information the chief's talking about, we're also in the process of, of getting some of that prepared in different languages too, so people can see it and, and, you know, be prepared as best they can. So, we're, Fire Chief's doing a great job leading our Incident Command team. He's working very closely with Police Chief Elgin, our Public Works Director, Mr. Murray, and all the staff. So, we are going to be as vigilant as we can going forth over the next three, four months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Item 5A.
Yes, Item 5A is a request from Cub Scout PAC 271 for cosponsorship of their Fourteenth Annual Cub Scout Pushcart Derby on Saturday, April 23rd, 2016.
There are representatives from Cub PAC here.
There is Lee Trong here? Okay, Lee?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. My name is Lee Trong. I'm with PAC 271. I'm also Assistant Scout Master for Troop 1103 out of West Garden Grove. We come to you once again to ask you guys to co-sponsor the Fourteenth Annual Cub Scout Pushcart Derby, which takes place on Springdale between the Twenty-two Freeway and Lampton. The event will be held on April 23rd of 2016, from 7:00 to 3:00. And once again, we come to ask you guys for the favor of sponsoring that event for us. All right? I have some scouts out here that wants to ask the request as well.
I'm Connor Trong. I'm from PAC 271.
I'd like to ask the city council.
I would like to ask the student council.
City council?
City council.
To please approve.
To please approve.
The cosponsor.
The cosponsor.
Of the Cub Scout event.
Of the Cub Scout event.
Hi, my name's Riley Trong. I'm from Troop 1103. I would like to ask the city council to sponsor this event.
So, these are the two scouts that are usually involved with the event deeply. My son, my older boy Riley, he's been in it since the beginning. So, I hope you guys take this request and approve it. And we also invite you guys to come out to watch as well. We'll be, if the event gets approved, we'll go ahead and send out a formal invitation to you guys.
Thank you. You know, I, I went to the event last year, and I had a lot of fun seeing the whole community be engaged. It's a great event. But I also want to ask, you know, for the issue of transparency, there isn't a cost analysis here included, and I'd like to see that.
Well, we do have an estimate of the cost of what it cost us last year. It's about twenty-four hundred dollars, including the street. But we can, we'll definitely attach it.
Okay. You know, this has become pretty much twenty-four hundred dollars as two thousand?
Twenty-four, yeah. Thousand four hundred.
Thousand four hundred.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. So, as far as the cost, Kim, is, is it like, security and other stuff too, that is involved in the?
Yes, the cost of public work down the street, and then have some police closure of the street. Just for a short period of time.
Thank you.
Sure. Is the police overtime calculated in this twenty-four hundred dollars? This seems to be an annual thing?
I believe that's the total cost, correct?
Okay, great, great. I just like, you know, it seems to be this is kind of a Garden Grove tradition, and I want to see it budgeted for ahead of time as well. So, that's, you know, something that we should think about going into the future. I, I think we, it seems to be, this is something that's gonna come back, and I hope it does again and again. I think it's important for us to not consider it every year again and again, but have a heads-up during our budgeting process. Okay?
Yeah, with the social media network nowadays, we've expanded out to not just Garden Grove. We actually have a couple troops coming from San Diego. So, it actually puts West Garden Grove, or Garden Grove City on the map for, you know, the, you know, the Boy Scouts of America, pretty much. So, as of right now, we're the only ones that shut down a major street and send our kids down the road. Everybody else just does it like at a school on a flat surface. So, I mean, we've been noticed, noticed on the Orange County BSA website, and also on Facebook. So, we, we, you know, sponsor this publicly, and, you know, we try to bring the business into Garden Grove and help, you know, bring everybody into it. So, I hope you guys can sponsor us.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'm gonna move to go ahead and sponsor the Fourteenth Annual Cub Scout Pushcart Derby on Saturday, April 23rd. Is there a second?
I'll second it. May I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I wish you well. I'm a big proponent of this. I started, well, I was a part of the beginning of, of this event way back when, when it first started. The founder, it's a well-received, well-participated by the scouts, their parents, the community. It's, it's looked forward to every year. And I want to extend my thanks to you for putting it on as the leader, the leaderships. It's a lot of work, a lot of effort, a lot of reward, a lot of smiles, a lot of memories. So, thank you for doing that. And again, I'm a strong proponent of this, and I wish you well, and I'll be there.
Okay, I need to take the vote. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Wynn?
Yes. Thank you. We're going to switch over to the successor agency business, so I'm going to pass that over to the successor agency chair, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll convene the November 24th session of the successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call a roll?
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Wynn?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with city council, so we'll go on to consent items, just receiving file of the minutes and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion?
Bill moved.
Second. Call the vote.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Wynn?
Yes.
Member Fawn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beard?
Yes.
Chair Jones?
Yes. We have no public hearings and no items. We have any matters from successor agency members? And then we will adjourn to sanitary district.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Member Bowie?
Uh, yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fawn?
Yes, thank you. We've done oral communications, consent items, accepting the minutes, and receiving it for October 27th. Have a motion, please?
Bill moved.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Member Bowie?
Yes.
Member Jones?
Yes.
Member Wynn?
Yes.
Vice President Beard?
Yes.
President Fawn?
Yes. Any matters from the board? Seeing then we'll adjourn. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, January 26th of next year, at 6:30.
Okay, we're reconvening our city council meeting. We have consent items.
Yes, consent item 6A, excuse me, through 6E will be acted on simultaneously unless a council member would like to pull an item for consent.
Want to entertain a motion?
I'll move the whole list.
Second.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Wynn?
Yes.
Item 7A, and I'm gonna call up a few people, three people here. First, Lisa Kim, and then Richard Nolan, and then Bill Grant.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Kim. I'm the Senior VP and General Counsel of Cathay Bank. Standing here next to me is Hang Chen, Executive Vice President and CFO of Cathay Bank. He was a primary contact before I came on board last year. It's always a pleasure to be here and to give you a report of where we are. We have some good news, some news we're trying to understand, and some challenging news. So, let me start with the good news, and a little bit of history, so you can understand where we're coming from, and all the hard work that we've put in so far to build this project. And we earnestly are working on building the project. The good news is, as you know, Cathay has entered into a purchase agreement with Brook Street and the Lab Company. And along with that, for the sale of the assets and the redevelopment of the property into one of the finest mixed-use properties in Southern California. Brook Street's one of the finest developers in Southern California. And they've accomplished numerous projects, including turning around troubled and historical projects. Trying to catch my breath from outside. The Lab, as you know, is an innovator and develops specific centers that are connected to the local community. Each of their projects begin anew with a precise audience in mind. No project is ever duplicated. No architectural or landscape designs are replicated. Projects are varied, and if you and your family have not visited the plant or any of their other projects, you know, we encourage you to do so. The projects include the Lab, the Camp, North Beach, and other innovative places. You have seen the preliminary vision for this project at Garden Grove, and we hope that you are equally excited about it as we are. To date, we have worked pretty diligently with the Hoag Foundation, and since late 2012, we've met all of their requests, including entering into the various agreements with the Hoag Foundation to allow preservation of the property and investigation for reuse. We've paid the rent diligently. We pay all the property taxes. We pay for all the security and maintenance costs until the Hoag Foundation determined that it wasn't necessary for us to do that anymore. We pay the Hoag Foundation fees in excess of a million five to date, working to identify and work with Brook Street to find a developer who would redevelop a partially-built project like that. And we prepared all of the legal documentation that's ready to go for the Hoag's attorney's review, and it's sitting with the Hoag's attorneys in order to move this project along. We've done, we have a few challenges, however, of which we don't fully understand, but let me put a little historical background on this, because I think you'll put in, you'll understand the context a little bit. As you know, we worked originally with TMA, Tri-Millennium Homes, last year to put a project in there with housing. And the city staff was really, really diligent in their efforts in putting this project together, and they worked good faith. And we put in a half a million dollars of attorney's fees, and then Hoag Foundation suddenly disapproved TMA as a developer and an owner. To that, what can we do? So, we said, "Fine." The Hoag Foundation's attorney, Bill Brinklow, subsequently stated that he thought that TMA and the city were conspiring to build something that was less desirable of what the Hoag Foundation wanted. But regardless, we went back to the drawing board, and with the assurance that the Hoag Foundation would work with us in good faith, we went back to drawing board and, and we interviewed almost twelve to fifteen developers, as you know, and we've chosen one that we think is the right fit for this project, for this city. And we wanted to, you know, present it to the Hoag Foundation as, "This is who we want to build the project." Now, we understood that Brook Street and Lab were embraced by the Hoag Foundation, but after all of the work, we suddenly received a letter from Mr. Brinklow saying that Hoag don't want to, does not want to continue working with us anymore, doesn't want the project, and is seeking a demolition of the half-built structure. We don't understand where the Foundation's actions are coming from and we'd like to get some clarity. But needless to say, Cathay Bank is fully committed and continues to mitigate damages on the project that is an eyesore to everybody. Cathay Bank is, and we're going to develop this project in the most expeditious manner possible. We've worked really hard and you'll hear from Brook Street today on how far they've gotten and how close we are to getting something built. In fact, today, we come here to put on record that Cathay Bank is fully prepared to pay the Hoag Foundation's outstanding attorney's fees of $556,973.37 immediately if they want it. And Hang has brought the check today. So we have it if they are ready to accept it, but on the condition that they will work with us in good faith to review Brook Street's plans, to work with them as a developer, as a chosen developer for this project. There is no other developer who's going to take this, no one other. And it's going to be such a great loss to have that taken down. It really will be. You can sense the voice, my voice, I'm very, very passionate about this development. I put my heart and soul into this thing because honestly, I've got other things at the bank, but this is the only one that keeps coming up all the time. And I like to put it to bed as much as everyone would like to as well. So we encourage you today, you know, oh, and by the way, the Hoag Foundation, they can choose later, after they accept our fees, if they don't want to do Ho, Brook Street later on. But we want, we encourage them to act in good faith and fair dealing, to review the plans, to work with us on the documents. We didn't make many changes. Brook Street didn't make any many changes on the ground lease or anything. We just need them to look at it. But I believe the impediment to them not looking at it is that we did not pay the attorney's fees. So we are here to pay, conditioned upon their cooperation in good faith. That's all we're asking for. We encourage you to postpone the action that's here before you today regarding the demolition and seek a formal update in January. I don't see how parties cannot come to reasonable minds on this thing, but sometimes I'm not sure if we're acting reasonably in certain opinions or certain ways. But we're excited about the project. We want it built. It's an eyesore from any location. We want to build it. And with Brook Street and the Hoag Foundation, we can do it. So please give us the opportunity. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. That's a big check right there. Dr. Grant? I'm sorry. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd first like to begin by thanking the city staff, the city council, and especially the community for their efforts and commitment to this project. For the last eight-plus years, the Hoag Foundation has worked tirelessly and expended significant resources and reserves to complete a project that would benefit the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove and ultimately the community. Although this is a very difficult decision, the Hoag Foundation, as a 501(c)(3), is bound by the guidelines of the state and the IRS tax code and can no longer expend additional resources for this project. A copy of the correspondence detailing the background for this decision is filed with the State Attorney General's Office and is provided to the city. It's also available to the public and we have about 50 copies here this evening if anybody is interested. This certainly is not the outcome that we had all hoped for and diligently tried to avoid, but as a nonprofit, bound by our fiduciary responsibility, we have been left with no other options. The Hoag Board is open to working with the city to pursue solutions that will ultimately best serve the needs of our community and the children we hope to serve for the next 60 years, as we have done for the last 60 years. Thank you to the community for your support. Thank you.
Rich Nolan?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name's Rich Nolan. I'm here representing Brook Street and the Lab Holdings. We have a company we formed called Garden Groovy. That's how excited we were and are to be involved in this project. We're new to the team and I think you know that, although in the nine months that we've been actively involved in this project, we certainly are getting a good taste of what you, the Hoag Foundation, and the communities had to put up with out there in terms of the frustration, the lack of progress and everything else. I mean, from our standpoint, we've spent a huge amount of money and resource to get where we are today, which is, you know, we have an agreement with the Cathay Foundation. We have done an extensive amount of due diligence. We've hired architects and designers. We have an iconic project that we would love nothing better than to show the city of Garden Grove, the Hoag, and the County of Orange. I mean, this is the only truly mixed-use project that's really being developed in Orange County. We are wildly excited about this, but there's things we can't kind of penetrate. There's a process that we're not involved in that's very opaque. I want to assure you, we stand ready to move forward with this project. We have our financing lined up, our capital, our designs. This is a project that could be under construction and put back into place in 2016. We are very confident of that. If we can get through the issues that are out there. I hate to say it, of all the people that have suffered from this project, the attorneys are the only one, and I hate to say it, in respect of all the attorneys on all sides here, they're the only ones that are coming out ahead on this project and it's really a shame. This, we're willing to sit down with the Hoag Foundation and with any other stakeholders out here to work on a real estate development. We want to be a good tenant to the Hoag Foundation. We love their mission. We think we're a part of accomplishing the mission of the Hoag Foundation. We want to be part of that. We just need to get through whatever this roadblock is, the barriers to getting there. We hope that everybody can sit down together, work out those issues, if there are attorney fees, let's work them out. It sounds like we had heard today that those things have worked out. If they are, let us give it a chance to bring this thing back to you. It would be a shame to have that rusted Hulk today go away because what will replace it will be nothing like what it could become if we have a chance to build this. So thank you for consideration and we stand ready to help, help city, help the Hoag Foundation to move this project forward and frankly, to get Cathay out of here. I'm sure they like that too.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do you have a report from staff on this?
Yes, Mayor and members of the council. As recall, at your regular session of November 10th, the council requested for staff to return with the opportunity to consider enforcement of the pending notice and order issued July 2nd, 2013 on this particular site. The city council received a written status update on May 26, 2015, which included prior status updates, project timeline, history, and correspondence from Cathay Bank, Hoag Foundation, and a prospective developer, Brook Street. Since the meeting of May 26, 2015, it was anticipated that the involved parties concerning the Lotus Plaza development would have shown certain progress to assure the city that the project was moving forward. Recently, as reported to the city, a purchase and sales agreement, PSA, had been reached between the prospective developer, Brook Street, and Cathay Bank to begin the process to renew the project. That action was to be followed by an agreement between these two entities and the Hoag Foundation. To date, it is the city's understanding that no further agreement and/or action has occurred to move the project forward. Therefore, at this time, no entitlement package has been submitted to the city for further consideration in order to renew the project. Due to the inaction on the part of the parties involved, it is suggested that the city council consider additional information and/or input that may be provided by the parties involved in this matter along with the following options. One is to authorize commitments of a court action to enforce the notice and order, to have a court abate the nuisance, and appoint a receiver to ensure removal of all structures on the site. Or allow all parties involved more time to continue to work through the issues concerning the pending agreements to allow the project to move forward. Or consider an alternative approach by setting incremental deadlines for certain actions to occur and subsequent to failing to meet such deadlines, take the appropriate action to have the structures removed. Therefore, it is recommended that the city council consider the matter, including any additional input, testimony, or other information and material, and direct staff accordingly. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Hey, so we're going to end deliberating on this item. You know, I do appreciate all the parties being here and I do appreciate you, your willingness to make this public. This has been a public concern for a very long time now. I personally am very happy to hear that there has been a purchase agreement between Cathay and Brooks and Lab. You know, it's quite a disappointment to hear personally that this is not moving forward and the justification is that it's a nonprofit status kind of issue. If we're really there to serve the city, then we're going to move forward. You know, I'd like to see this move forward. I think a lot of people would. And I would like to see folks come to the table and communicate. I've never seen this kind of action where someone would bring half a million dollars to move something forward. That definitely shows their interest in resolving this. So that's, that's where I stand at this point. It's been a long dragged-out thing. We have already given a lot of time on this, so I want to hear from my colleagues too.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So I believe the representative from the Hoag Foundation came in with kind of a prepared speech that he read up there, but immediately prior, there was sort of a new event in this presentation of the check. So I think I'd be curious to hear, and you just sort of blurted out that you weren't aware of this either. So what's, what's the reaction to the offer to pay the attorney fees in, in exchange for cooperation with the? Sir, can you come on up?
Hi, I'm Bill Brinklow, the attorney for Hoag Foundation, and we're not in a position to answer that question tonight at a public meeting. So we read our statement tonight. That's what the Board of Hoag Foundation has decided. They would have to have another meeting and make another decision and we're not ready to answer in a public forum. So we've tried with Cathay Bank. We've made our position clear and then that's all the comment we can give tonight. So the city needs to do what the city thinks is best on this issue. That's what it comes down to. Thank you.
If, if I may, you know, ask a question to the board. I, you know, with many of my colleagues and I believe with the resident, we are patient because we believe that the continuation of the project and the completion of the Galaria will benefit everyone. The city, the resident, the Hoag Foundation, Cathay, and the developers. So if, if it can be moved forward, it would be a win-win situation for everyone. Now, certainly, you know, we realize that this is a private entity that need to work together. It's a private project. And the city cannot force, you know, any one of the parties to do, you know, what you want or not want to do. I, and also I do not believe that we need to be, or we want to be a referee in this, in this case. We don't want to, you know, to point the finger of, you know, who's, you know, are willing to work on the, to move this project forward or not willing to work on the project. That is a position that the city does not need to get, to be involved in. What we want to be involved in to, is to facilitate and mitigate a cooperation between the parties to, to resolve the differences and move this thing forward. So in that view, I would like to understand clearly from the Hoag Foundation, what are the hurdles that prevent the Hoag from, from, from working with the other? And perhaps if we, if we understand the issue, then we could try to help mitigate it. But one thing that we, the city wants every party know for sure, if there is no hope of moving this forward, then we better kill this tonight. So, so if any party say, I don't want to do it, then we will vote down the pass where we will have it demo, demo this. But, you know, we, we want to help. So if there is a small hope that, that the three party can work together and, and work out the difference between the parties, then, then we, we would be willing to give you guy another opportunity, a smaller window to, to work out, especially if the financial, the legal cost is being resolved now.
Dr. Phil Grant from Hoag Foundation?
Thank you. This isn't just about the legal cost. That is part of it. And we have been discussing the legal cost since June. And until tonight, we haven't heard a single thing until just now. And if all of the parties were quite ingenuous with regard to what we were going to do, we probably wouldn't be standing here tonight. The legal costs are part of it. There's document issues. There's all kinds of things. The Hoag Board has wrestled with these issues. And you know what? I've given my word to a lot of people that I've talked to that I really thought that this would go forward. And we have run into nothing but roadblocks. I don't think that this is the forum to discuss this. I would be as open and frank as I can. We have been advised by our legal counsel as some of the things that we can say and some of the things that we can't. But you know what? This, every time we reach one of these crossroads, it's at the last minute and yes, we're going to work together. And then just like we discussed last February, are we really that much closer than we were since February? And in my opinion, unfortunately, the answer is no. So I, none of us wanted to see this thing come down. All of us wanted to see what is best for the community. And the Hoag Foundation has tried to do what is best for the community. We're the ones that's here. The city is the ones that are here. So we're making every effort we can. Do I think that it's completely impossible? I don't know. I wouldn't answer that question. But I will tell you, if, if there is direction that you would like the Hoag Board to have a reconsideration, that's fine. And I will take that back to the board and as the president, I will have them. The answer may not change at all and it might change some. I don't know. But it is a very difficult situation to be in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. And then actually, let's hear, you know, Ms. Kim respond.
Please.
From Cathay Bank.
Thank you. In June of this year, the Hoag Foundation had requested that we pay their attorney's fees of 500 some odd dollars, 500,000 some odd dollars. Last year, in October or September of last year, prior to my coming on, Hoag asked for us to pay $533,000 of their attorney's fees and then they'll look at TMH. So we said, fine. And in good spirit and good faith, we gave them $533,000. We're prepared to do that again and we've always told the foundation in an email, in letters, we tried to pick up the phone to call Mr. Brinklow. We are barred from talking to Dr. Grant. We are barred from talking to Mr. Wymer. We are barred from speaking to anybody on the board to decide on this action. We wanted to pay half of the attorney's fees and then half we will pay. We never, ever said we would not pay. But we wanted cooperation from the board and we could not get that because, in my opinion, on, on the record, I believe Mr. Brinklow is the impediment to this matter. Because we can't seem to pierce through him to get to the board to tell them what our position is. Mr. Nolan has tried and attempted to speak with the Foundation about the project. And at each time, Mr. Brinklow would send me an email saying, do not, you are forbidden to talk to anybody and I will not be responding to Mr. Nolan. We can't get through. We have the resources. We have the people. We have the project. We want to go forward. And if they come, and they're saying this, that this is the first time they've seen the check, absolutely, this is the first time. Because in the public forum, we want them to know and acknowledge that all we're asking for is their cooperation to build this project. We don't want to build a project built on animosity. We want to be out of it as fast as we can. And we're going to lay the resources that are necessary to do so, and we are doing so. We have paid to date over 1.5 million dollars for nothing that has been on that project. We've, we, yes, and we are. That's only in legal fees. There's another 2 million that we've paid to get to this point. So we respectfully request that the city council consider this project to move forward. Really, we do. I think you'll be really happy and you'll be proud of that project because you've got great, great developers on this. great, great developers on this project irrespective of the Hoag and Cathay Bank's differences. Thank you.
Mr. Fan?
Yes, Dr. Grant, if you could, I don't know how much you can go into as far as the details of how the Board deliberate and stuff like that, but you can just share with us about what exactly is the mission for Hoag and why is it that this project is not in conjunction with that mission? And also, why is it that recently this turn of events happened? Because if this project all along was not in the Hoag's mission statement or vision, why not let the city know way back in February that this would be the case, or at least way, way before, so that we're not traveling down this rapid hole? And then, here we are again. I'm very perplexed. So, can you please enlighten us on that, Dr. Grant?
Now, I don't have our mission statement in front of me, but it is to support the Boys and Girls Club of Garden Grove. That's our mission, and that's what the Hoag, going back to the early '50s, was established for. I think there's maybe a misunderstanding. No, we filed the report with the State Attorney General's Office because we expended more than 50% of our fees in an unrelated area. It had nothing to do with anything else other than, once the fees were not reimbursed by Cathay Bank, they came out of Hoag's reserves. The number is certainly well over the 500 dollar, or 500,000 dollar mark, and so we had to file that form, and you should have it with you, with the State Attorney General's Office. That's what is one of the problems, a big problem that we have to deal with now. We are at risk of losing our nonprofit status if we continue down that road. So, our mission hasn't changed. Our mission's still the same. It really has to do with our nonprofit status and the expenditure of fees outside of what our mission is.
Are you able to give us any assurance, for example, if this compensation by Cathay for the attorney's cost is covered? Is there a change in direction that perhaps you can advise us on that the Board would take? Because it sounds like it's a money issue, if I'm not mistaken.
It's been focused on tonight as a money issue. Is that one of the issues? The answer is significantly yes. Is that the only issue? Absolutely not.
And if you could, tell us what the other issues are, if you're able to.
Again, I'm not sure that this is the forum to debate this, and I certainly all due respect with Lisa, and, you know, we've just had a number of issues that every time that we're trying to do something, a lot of it's with documents and things like that. I mean, this has gone back and forth ad nauseam, and even the recent exchange of some of the documents that we've had reviewed, we have expended more money since June when we said we wouldn't. And it's put us in a position that we can't go forward as a Board and expend that kind of money. We're in trouble now. And so, as I said, it's not just the financial thing. That is just one of them. It's been a battle. There's ongoing litigation right now that we're looking at.
So, we were to give you more time, would that even make a difference?
I, you know, I can't speak, I won't speak for the Board. I certainly, again, if the direction is from the City Council to reconvene the Board and discuss the matter in light of some changes tonight, you know, that I can say will happen. What the outcome of that discussion is, I have no idea. But I personally wouldn't make that decision as just a single Board member of that.
So, for example, hypothetically, and my colleagues have to agree, but if we give you two more weeks by the next council meeting, would you be able to tell us yea or nay based on what you heard tonight?
Assuming that we could get the Board members together, I have, I don't know the answer to that. I would say yes. I was out of town, and so I had some difficulty in the last month, but I would assume that we would be able to get the Board together and then meet and return to you within the next two weeks.
Thank you, Doctor.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I have some question for our city attorney.
February?
In the letter from the Hoag Foundation dated November 23rd. It's a long letter, but I just want to zero in on one particular area. That is, the Hoag Foundation is willing to enter into a written agreement. That is the last paragraph on the other side of the letter. Enter into a written agreement with the city pursuant to which Hoag Foundation will waive any right to oppose and slash or contest the demolition notice and order. Furthermore, in the agreement, Hoag Foundation will agree to perform the demolition of the partially completed structure subject to GGG, which is a Galleria developer, a regional developer, and Cathay Bank's written consent. Now, this may be premature to discuss at this point, but I would like to understand clearly the legal ramification if we decided to, you know, move forward with the recommendation, number one, in which we will begin the litigation process to ask a judge, the court, to intervene and perhaps appoint a receiver to start the demolition order and process. So, what I would like to understand is the legal liability for the city, for the Hoag Foundation, and for all of the parties that are involved.
I can't really speak for the liability per se. I can tell you that we have a current order that is in effect, and so, and is not appealable at this time. It was appealed by Cathay initially, and that appeal was denied. At that point, Cathay had the opportunity to challenge the denial of the appeal in court, and they didn't. So, now the statute of limitations for that further appeal to the court has already expired. Hoag did not appeal the demolition order, so currently, they don't really have a right to appeal it. So, we can actually move forward with enforcement of the notice and order. The only issue is how much time a judge would give them to actually bring the construction companies to commence tearing it down. So, it's an issue of timing at this point. The appointment of a receiver would actually facilitate a quicker tear down, so to speak. So, at this point, the city doesn't really have a lot of options as a regulatory body because the law says that when you have construction that hasn't been completed for two years, the city's option is to order that they board up and give one additional year for construction to recommence. Once that is expired, the law says that the construction shall be torn down. We are at the point where the year we issued the notice, we gave them the year, that year has passed. Construction has now restarted. So, at this point, the city does not have a lot of options other than, at this point, enforce the order. And the City Council, again, actually does have the authority to grant additional time for the parties to bring back. Really, the critical point is for a developer to submit plans to continue with construction. Right now, they couldn't continue construction without building permits. And to the extent that the proposed development is not the same as the one that was approved for the Galleria project, and that those permits have expired also because the time has passed. So, there is a requirement to submit plans for approval by the city before construction recommences. So, the critical point for the city is to get these plans submitted to show that there is construction that's going to go forward. So, at this point, I think that to the extent that the Hoag Foundation is proposing an agreement with the city, that agreement would, could be in the form of the city allowing additional time before going into court for Hoag Foundation to bring the contractor to commence the demolition. You also need a demolition permit issued by the city before demolition can continue. And so, there is an opportunity for the city to enter into agreements with Hoag Foundation. The reason they say that they need Cathay Bank's written consent is because Cathay Bank currently has an interest in the property in the form, I believe, they took over the ground lease, which is a property right.
Now, what happens when GGG and the bank does not agree to a written consent for Hoag to start the demolition? If they do not agree, what would happen?
If they do not agree, that's when the only choice we have is to go to court, which is a third-party enforcement mechanism that where, the reason we would go into court is to force the demolition notwithstanding the opposition of the parties. So, the parties will have an opportunity in court to challenge the demolition order. But as I said, that demolition order is final. So, really, the only issue is who and when the demolition will commence and who will pay for it.
Okay. So...
Couple more questions.
Sure.
Follow-up question. So, assuming that, you know, if everyone agreed to demo it, is there's no need for us to continue discussing? Or if everyone can agree that they want to start building and submit the design and permit, then we do not need to get, you know, to talk about it tonight? So, assuming that Brooks Street or, you know, Garden Grove, the Galleria and the bank doesn't agree to for the demo, and we have to go to the court to get the order to start the demolition through the receiver, what happened? Will, if anyone of the party sue, will they sue the receiver or will they sue the city? Or will they sue each other?
Or everybody?
The city has immunity under law for enforcing laws, but, so the, if there is litigation, it would be one started by the city, and then they will have an opportunity to oppose that litigation. So, at this point, the parties could sue the city, but the city has immunity. We would easily contest damages caused of action against the city. Can they sue each other? Sure, they can, but that's going to be litigation amongst themselves. Again, the city is only a regulatory body. We would not be going into court to seek damages. We would only be going into court to enforce a current order that's in place.
Assuming that the court agreed to appoint a receiver, what is a possibility that someone will step forward to assume the receiver, you know, responsibility?
We have worked with various receivers, and to date, we have not had a receiver indicate that they're not interested in being appointed to continue with enforcement of a lawful order that's in place. So, if we are not able to find a receiver for the court to appoint, it would be a first for us. Then again, this huge construction is a first in our cases as well. We have had other situations where we had smaller development, and we've never have had a problem appointing a receiver. I will tell you that I do understand, and I know that there was a receiver in place in this particular case in the litigation amongst the parties between Garden Grove Galleria and Cathay Bank. And also, Hoag Foundation had agreed to appointment of a receiver. So, there is, there is history of receivers managing the maintenance of the property in the past. In our case, it would just be a very limited receivership, only to ensure that the demolition order is managed and enforced in a manner that is, you know, compliance with health and safety. It's not simple to just tear down, you know, millions of pounds of steel, which is why permits are required, and there's got to be an engineered demolition. So, a receiver will be helpful in managing, hiring a contractor, submitting building permits, managing the demolition, and ultimately, they will get paid back by leaning the property and requiring the property owner, responsible parties, in this case Cathay has an interest in the property, getting paid back. If the receiver is not paid back, they will lean the property, and the property can be a sole foreclosure to satisfy those costs.
So, I want to do a straw poll of how my colleagues feel on this in terms of, do, what is it that we want to see? Do we want to see this complete or not? That's basically, because we've given a lot of time already, and there's been new information that has arisen tonight. I want to be fair and let everybody consider that. But the reality is, what is it that we as a council here want to see happen?
If I may, Mr. Jones, may I ask our attorney one more question? Not to put you on the spot, Omar, but just a ballpark estimate. If we were to initiate or to go with the demolition now, how soon do you think we would be seeing no more steel on that property?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to happen overnight, like I indicated. Not only do you need permits and engineered commencement of demolition, but Ho, Cathay, or receiver is going to have to hire a contractor to do so. That large of a project will most likely go through a RFP or bidding-type process in order to identify the contractor that is going to be willing and able to tear it down. So, I foresee at least another six months...
Okay.
...before anything can actually start happening.
And if we were to initiate the demolition order tonight, and for, you know, they meet in two weeks, and they want to change course and do the project, can we put all stops to the demolition at that time, or once we push the button, that's it?
Once we push the button, there is an opportunity to come into a settlement with the parties to change course. But without a settlement, we would need to move forward all the way to completion of the city's action. The city's action is court enforcement, and it's very dangerous to commence court enforcement and then say, "Oh, we changed our minds." And I think that's the case in any court enforcement case.
Right.
Unless there's an actual settlement of the matter.
And when you say settlement, do you mean, basically, the parties will lay down exactly what their obligations are and what they would do to complete the project?
Yes. A settlement would include specific dates by which the defending parties would agree to comply with the city's orders.
Okay. Thank you, Omar.
You know, I want to thank staff for the report, and also our acting city attorney for the council and all the parties that came. And I appreciate the deliberation here as well. The reason why I asked for the straw poll is really whether we want to give any time, any more time, and/or do we want to issue the demolition today? And before, you know, we entertain a motion in that direction, I think we should hear from everybody. Deliberate in that way. So, I think we've heard, we've heard from the parties already, and now is really our time here as a panel to discuss this in a deliberative fashion.
If I could, sir, I'll start off. My viewpoint is, I would like for Hoag to at least give us a definitive based on what they learned tonight, the next two weeks, by our next council meeting. I don't think that's too much of a push, and I think at that time, if we get a definitive, then at least I'll have an assurance that we're not going to start something and then have to stop because they decide to change course to settle this issue.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Just want to start by iterating that this is a, this project is a private market failure. It is not a redevelopment agency project. It's not a public-private partnership. The city does not have any dollars into it, and we should, first and foremost, protect our own interests as a city and a protector and guardian of... our own interests as a city and a protector and guardian of public dollars in that we don't get sucked any deeper into the middle of this private-party dispute than we already are. So, that's kind of one factor. Personally, I believe that there's tremendous amount of economic value in the physical structure, the improvements that currently exist, as ugly as they may be, as blighted as they may be. I think if, however, we get there, if those improvements go away, then the next thing in line probably won't be nearly as fabulous as what this could be. So, to answer your question directly, I would like to see this type of project or this project go forward and I'd like to see that building get completed out into something that could be, that could really turn that around and make, you know, the most blighted piece in town, the most wonderful part of town. So, I would like to see that and I would like to see if there's any opportunity for the parties to reconvene, get together and try and work something out that I think would be first prize. So, I, you know, as much as we are all very eager to see something happen there, right, to remove that blight, whether it's completing what's there or demolishing it, I think it's imprudent to act too hastily in the middle of a very complicated and very high-dollar private-party dispute to go forward. So, I'm probably more patient than what I've kind of gathered from discussion from the rest of the board about giving this due time to work itself out before we take any kind of decisive action on demolition.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe that it is a really eye sore and our residents are very tired of seeing it. It also an embarrassment to our city. However, considering the potential huge benefit if we would be able to move it forward. And that's why we've been patient for eight months now. And I'm very saddened if we have to abandon that. But, I believe that we need to abandon it when it is the right time to abandon it. I am willing only to extend it a little more times, but not a whole lot. Given the fact that Cathay agreed to pay for the legal cost of that Hoag have been incurred so far and perhaps there are, there seem to be some other issue with contractual issue. I do not understand the magnitude of that dispute, contractual dispute. But, if in the next couple of weeks, if the Hoag Foundation, the board and Cathay and Brooks Street can sit together for maybe another, shall I say, final attempt to, you know, work out the differences, I would be willing to be a little more patient. But, I think, I think we cannot, we cannot extend it forever.
Thank you. Mr. Beard?
Yeah, I think the ball is in the court of the Hoag Foundation right now. I mean, I would like to see quality development. I think there's more positive elements to it, but they're the party that has to agree to move forward with it. We heard tonight, Dr. Grant was basically saying, "We're not going to continue on, period." And that was after he heard the new information from Cathay. So, I'm willing to offer up an extension for them to take it to the board to reconsider. Doesn't sound constructive or positive that it may move forward, but I'm willing to give them that extension of time to do just that, to have their board take it up one final time based on the new information that came up tonight. Otherwise, I think we have a duty to do. It's pretty clear-cut for us. So, I'm willing to, if it is a negative at the next meeting or after their meeting we hear otherwise, I would be in favor of commencing with the court action to do our duty and bring the building down, structure down.
So, we, I'm hearing, you know, I agree with all of you that, you know, in light of new information, that we should give some more time. And we heard our legal counsel as well talk about the city's position. And we also heard a public comment earlier, too, mention about discriminatory enforcement or enforcing the law in our city and what are our laws for, you know? So, you know, I have a motion entertain. I heard Mr. Fan say two weeks and I didn't hear some dates or amounts of time from others. But, you know, we're going into the holiday season here and hopefully that does something for us all as well. No, I, I'm a believer. So, you know, I'm generally not very patient, you know, when it comes to things that I see that are wrong, you know? But, here, I see possibility as well. And I definitely agree with you, Mr. Jones, that this can become something really beautiful for our city. There's a lot of money there, a lot of value there. And there is a great mission that the Hoag Foundation has. You know, hopefully, you know, this check here resolves that issue. I personally hope that you take it to open communication and have those open channels of communication. Because you've heard our city council tonight and we would like to see it move forward. You know, it can be something very beautiful for all of us. So, my motion is to provide all parties until December 25th to provide the city written confirmation of an agreement by the Hoag Foundation to approve submission of plans and restart the construction. Otherwise, the city attorney is authorized to bring action to enforce the notice of order. Okay? So, that's the date. If nothing else, no conversations happen. We certainly hope that there are conversations. We all do. December 25th is the date I'm putting forward.
Can you clarify again? I apologize for this because you just read it in detail, but can you clarify the motion again of what's supposed to happen prior to December 25th?
So, if there is an agreement to approve the submission of plans, then demolition order needs to move forward.
Are we having a meeting on that day, Mayor? I'm just trying to see as far as this for publicity and just for, you know?
Yeah, you know, the spirit of the season.
So, if the eighth is not, is too close, do we have another public session before that time or near that time?
Is the eighth the last one prior to the?
Oh, the city staff is definitely operating and we're lucky we have our city manager who lives right here in Garden Grove.
I was wondering if the Hoag Board might be able to convene everyone before that to discuss. You know, they, during this holiday season, you know, maybe some of the board members might be traveling and not be available to meet and, you know, decide on this issue. And this is a complicated issue for them. So, I, if everyone does not mind, I would tend to think that December 8th is too aggressive. It's almost impossible. If we, whether we agree to extend or we don't. If we extend, I think we should extend to the meeting after December 8th, which would bring it to January.
Is there a meeting on the 22nd? No, there isn't? Okay. Why that sound like? Then January 12th?
We generally go dark on the second meeting.
I see.
So, when would be the next council meeting after the December 8th?
That would be January 12th. I think we should take advantage of, you know, the season and really...
Well, aside from just the date, the other part I think we need to clarify is what are we expecting to hear when they come back? I mean, if you break this thing down into parts, the next thing we're curious about is in light of the check that got waved around today, is Hoag interested in continuing good-faith negotiations towards doing a deal or not? I mean, I think that's the first sort of data point. So, just them convening as a board and saying, "Okay, we might be open to that," doesn't mean they're going to have a deal done that day or whatever, either, you know what I mean? So, I think the first step is if they come back and they say, "Absolutely not, we're not interested," well, then they're, we're going to disagree or whatever, right? But, if they come back and say, "Maybe," well, then, then I think we give them till after the holidays sometime to actually sit down and try and work that all out. So, it's, to me, it's kind of a two-stepper. It's like, how quickly could the Hoag Board convene and just say, "In light of the check presentation show tonight," you know, would they be interested in continuing the dialogue or something in good faith, right? And if not, then, then not. And if so, then they need time to get to the next step.
That makes sense. So, maybe the December 8th, they just give us an indication that, yeah, they are willing to sit down and talk. They do, they may not have an agreement, but they're willing to work toward it. And then, maybe the January 12th would be when we expect a contract. And if any of those two milestones are missed, then we will take the action to start litigating.
Take it one step at a time.
Yeah. I think, I think we should update the city's course after that.
Two weeks?
I would say so.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do that.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Should we check, is there any reason it's not feasible for the Hoag Foundation to convene and get back?
Certainly. I was just going to ask Dr. Grant. Okay. So, that means that your motion, Mr. Fan, is to give the parties until December 8th and then for us to take the next step after that.
That's correct.
So, that means that on December 8th, we will have agenda's consideration to move forward with demolition. Is that correct?
Yes. And if I also may, Mr. Mayor, invite all the parties back so that they can address the public openly about that issue.
Certainly. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Please vote.
Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawn?
Yes.
Mayor Nguyen?
Yes. Okay.
I can hear, I can hear her after we hear from, or after we hear item 8A. Sure, I can, I can do that. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. Mr. Stiles?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of city council, we put this item 8A on for matters for discussion very briefly. This is just a reminder that we put on for a public hearing before the planning commission or I should say, the planning commission will hear on December 3rd, will meet on December 3rd to consider regulations intended to continue the current marijuana dispensary ban in the city. So, what the planning commission will be considering is a boot and suspenders ordinance that reinforces the city's existing policy on the marijuana dispensary ban to be consistent with the current policies that are in place. And this is resulting from the recent legislation that the, that the state, state regulations have put in place and that council members, if we want to make any changes to our regulations, would need to be in effect. The reason, the reason we're putting this forward now is if the planning commission doesn't hear the matter as we work through the calendar by December 3rd, by the December 3rd meeting of the planning commission, the council may not have time to review the regulations continuing with the current ban to comply with the new state regs. And so, the planning, what the planning commission will be considering is a text amendment to Title IX of the municipal code to update it in a manner consistent with the recently enacted legislation to clarify that the establishment, maintenance or operation of marijuana dispensaries and related commercial cannabis activities, including the distribution, manufacturing, cultivation, delivery of cannabis and/or cannabis products continues to be prohibited throughout the city. And the proposed code amendment that the planning commission will hear would clarify that any use, not specifically identified as a permitted use, will continue to be prohibited. Now, I think it's important to point out that the adoption by the council of any new regulations continuing with the ban would not preclude the council from at any point changing its policies in the future. So, what we're trying to do is preserve all the options for the council going forward. So, what the planning commission obviously is just a recommending body to the, to the members of council and it'll be the council ultimately to make a decision on what you do going forward to, you know, maintain, you know, the policies of the city. So, wanted to just alert the council members of that and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. That is December 3rd. At what time, Mr. Stiles?
On December 3rd, the planning commission meets at 7:00 PM.
Okay, so, on December 3rd at 7:00 PM, the planning commission will be meeting and they will hear public comments as well as usual before any of the planning commission meetings at 7:00 PM, December 3rd. What day is that? Let me see. December 3rd is a Thursday, Thursday, December 3rd. And they are considering continuing the ban as a recommendation to the city council. And basically, we have until March 1st, under mandate by California state, to have policies presented after the state had introduced three new laws that allows this regulation, local control and taxation of dispensaries to operate in our city. So, I definitely encourage those parties, whomever they are, to attend this meeting on Thursday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM. And it will be right here at the Courtyard Center. All right. And thank you, Mr. Bowie, for bringing to my attention. There was someone here that didn't put in a public comment card, but would like to speak on a city matter. Do you have the name of that person?
Yes, well, before we start, let me begin with saying that over the last five weeks, I have received quite a few complaints from various businesses along Brooks Street where road construction had been going on since September until now. Their concern was largely around the fact that from their perception, the road construction had been quite too slow. Sometime they see, you know, the workers work on for a day or two and then they stop working for four, five day and then resume working for another day or two and then stop another four, five day. And this prolonged road construction have severely reduced the incomes and they suffer quite a lot. So, I told them that the city is understanding of the hardship that the road construction have caused business as well as local residents. However, road construction is a necessary, whether we like it or not, and the process does take a long time this time because it, we are digging up, this is a major repair, not just a resurfacing. And I encourage them that if they have issue, they need to come to the city council and express their concern and give their input. We always welcome their, you know, their presence here. So, I see a few of them here, but I didn't see them turn in the car. So, I, that's why I remind you, perhaps we can open the public auto communication to allow them to speak.
Sure, I can certainly do that. And all I'd ask is that you come to the mic, state your name and your issue. And I'd also like to ask Mr. Murray to step forward with staff. Thank you. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Okay. Please state your name.
My name Julie Bitngopwin. I'm the owner of New Heifut Go at 14208 Brooks Street. I think my English cannot enough, so that why I need... I think my English cannot enough, so that why I need Mr., Mr. Vin will translate to me.
Okay. Is, is Mr. Vin an interpreter provided by the city? Did we know this ahead of time? Or is he's?
No.
No, we didn't? Okay.
Mr. Vin cũng là chủ tịch của cộng đồng người việc tại Orange County.
Yeah, my name is Vin, and I'm president of Vietnamese community of southern, southern Colo, Hoa Nha. Actually, I, I understand the issue here, so I, I think I can speak for you. Okay.
And you translate to me?
Okay.
Trước nhất tôi xin cảm ơn ông Scott, manager của city. Anh Phát Bùi và ông Biêu. Sau khi nghe tôi thang phim về việc sửa đường quá lâu thì ba ông có đến tiệm tôi để tìm hiểu. Lúc đầu khi mà tôi...
She said that because of the Brookhurst Street had been repaired for a long time, so she complained to Mayor Ba Nguyên, also council member Fat Bu and Steve Jones, so they have came to, come to...
Excuse me to interrupt, but that's not what she said. So I think you need to, to translate word by word of what she said, otherwise it's not a true representation.
Đầu tiên tôi xin cảm ơn ông Scott, manager của, của city. Cũng nghe anh Phát Bùi, ông Phát Bùi và ông Biêu. Sau khi nghe tôi complain đã đến tận tiệm tôi để tìm hiểu sự việc.
Okay. She want to say thanks to Scott, manager, and, and Fat Bu, the council member Fat Bu, and who else?
Biêu.
And Biêu, Mr. Biêu. So hey, they, they, they came to her business. She want to thank you for all people had come to...
Lúc đầu khi mà chúng tôi nhận được giấy của city sửa đường thì tôi rất là vui. Tại vì tôi nghĩ là, tôi nói với con gái tôi là mình hên quá mới vô tiệm này mà đã được chấp sửa cái đường mới. Vì tôi nhận, mới nhận cái business này từ đầu tháng 7.
She said that when she moved her business to on that street, and she very happy when she see the street be repaired on the street. And she talked to her daughter, she's, they're happy about that.
Nhưng mà sau khi sửa đường được một tuần thì tôi thấy là sự việc không như tôi nghĩ. Không biết là cái việc sửa đường này là do city chọn sai người contractor, hay là sự lơ là của city không theo giỏi việc làm đường của, của ông này. Nên con đường Brookhurst là con đường chẵn, rất là đông.
After a week about the street being repairing, she's very disappointed about that the thing happened that, um, she said that because of the company, the construction company didn't do a good job, or the company, the city government didn't monitor what they do on the street.
Tại vì con đường Brookhurst là con đường rất là đông xe cộ qua lại, mỗi bên có ba lane, ba lane.
And Brookhurst is a very heavy traffic, so only three lanes per one side.
Nhưng mà cái ông làm đường đó đã close hết hai lanes.
And two lanes was closed at that time.
Và cái việc bị nhẹt đường rất là trầm trọng, trong tuần đầu.
And the traffic very terrible, you know, at the first week.
Và trong...
I can give you two more minutes?
Yeah.
Since there's interpreting going on, you have two minutes, ma'am.
Two minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, bà có hai phút để tiếp tục nói.
Và sau đó một tuần thì business tôi mất đi hết 50% khách. Và sau hai tuần, tôi vẫn kiên nhẫn chờ đợi.
Yeah. After one week, her business lost about 50%. And after two weeks, she's still waiting for, for other repairing.
Nhưng mà có nhiều người khách vô, thấy tôi không có khách vắng so với tháng trước thì họ rất là là tức giận cho tôi. Hả? Sau hai tuần, sau hai tuần, okay, ai nói? Sau hai tuần. Sau hai tuần thì những người khách vô họ rất là tức giận tại vì họ chỉ thấy là những người làm đường đó.
Oh, okay, okay. After two weeks, even her customers came to her business and was very angry about the people who, who work on the street.
Yeah, they, they work one day and they stop three, four days. Yeah, and many times like this. And we lost about, three weeks, we lost about 70% customers.
Okay, the, the workers...
Sir, that was in English, sir. Ma'am, please continue.
Yeah. And until November...
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. Until November, we lost 90% customer. Because many people, they said, they avoid that street. Because stuck, only one block was stuck, stuck, they come to my business, take us half an hour, only, only one block. But my business, Phu To Go.
Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. Okay.
Hi.
Are, are you the second speaker, sir?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Yes, not only her, but I got a lot, a lot complaints from business owners on that street, and they came to, to my office in Vietnamese community office, and raised that concern too, because a lot of business owners on that street have lost a lot income since the street been repaired. So please, city government, take this consideration deeply and, and seriously, so you can resolve this, this problem, the issue as soon as you can, so you can bring back all business owners back to normal.
Thank you. You know, I...
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, I've heard, I've heard a lot of complaints too from folks, and definitely understand that it's hurting businesses, and folks are avoiding, and encourage if they're using Brookhurst to use other streets, especially if they're not planning on stopping by any particular business there. Can we get an, an update on what's happening, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor and members of council. And, you know, let me just mention, we are, you know, we've taken the construction and schedule on Brookhurst Street very, very seriously. We know that when there's perceptions that work is going, going slow, or it's not being done right, perceptions are oftentimes reality. And so we have to take those very seriously. What we do want to say is, you know, we know that it, it's, the construction has been very difficult for a lot of businesses. It has been congested, there's, it's, it's been tough on businesses. And especially as we're going into the holiday season, when we know a lot of retailers are trying to make up a good portion of their business. I think Mr. Murray's gonna have some good news for us here in one second. But I did want to just kind of reiterate to the council members that as we've been tracking this project, I know it's difficult, I know it seems like a long time, workers are doing work on the street, and then they're off for a couple days. That's usually related to letting concrete set and doing other things that are just the normal course of, of getting construction done. But we know, you know, I was, I was out at Ms. Julie's business, I think, and we know it's been very difficult for her. You know, we've worked with the, Mr. Murray, and we've approved Saturday work to try to speed up the work, to try and get it done as fast as possible. A lot of times, businesses will say, well, work into the night, work all night long, but then there's concerns with people who live in, you know, residences right along the street who, you know, can't sleep at night and things like that. So it's a really a difficult proposition for any construction manager to try and manage it as quickly as possible. The good news is, when this project is done, it's a major reconstruction of one of the major streets in our city. And when it's done, it's going to be in terrific shape for 20 years or longer. We know there's, it's short-term pain now, but in the end, we're gonna have a wonderful street that's gonna be in great shape for a lot of years. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Murray to tell us exactly, you know, when the work is gonna be complete. And I think what he's gonna share with us is that they're actually ahead of schedule, and we expect to have the street open in three lanes each directions as soon as one week from today. So we want to get everything done, unless I'm misspeaking, but maybe, Mr. Murray, you can kind of bring us up to date.
Thank you, Scott. Well, actually, now let me kind of begin with, with the process of what we're trying to do out there. As Mr. Bowie, Councilmember Bowie had alluded to, it is a full reconstruction of the street. And so we're actually having to go down a couple feet and remove all of the base material and then bring in new material, and that material is cement treated. And with, with cement treating, you, you have to let the concrete or the cement basically cure, and then it gets rolled over in a process that we call microfracturing before we could go ahead and put base pavement on it. It simply takes a, a little bit longer. And the perception is, is that the crews are simply leaving and, you know, they're not doing anything. But what they're doing is, is moving to another section of the job. What we have is two street sections, one to the north and one to the south, and they simply have been going back and forth to each one of them. If they wouldn't have, they wouldn't be doing as well in the schedule as they are right now. Speaking of the schedule, we, we are gonna have all the base paving complete by the end of business tomorrow, which will allow six lanes to be open for Thanksgiving. So we're pretty happy about that, and, and I think that that's an excellent Thanksgiving gift. And barring any unforeseen circumstances, we should have all the final cap done by the end of week, end of the week next week. So in, in a couple weeks, you know, the only thing left to be done will be striping, raising manholes, and water valves, things of that nature, very minor work, but the, the street for all practical purposes will be up and running. We also, in, on this particular project, included video detection, so we don't even have to, you know, cut the signal loops in order to get the signals running up to full speed. So, you know, we, we're pretty happy with the progress on there. And, you know, there has been a lot of misperception. When, when I visited the business owners over there, one of them mentioned that, you know, Westminster had done similar work, so much faster. So I went on the internet and I looked at that, because I'm, I'm not aware of Westminster having any particular expertise over us on, on their construction techniques. And what I did is I found a similar project on Brookhurst that was completed in 2010. They did half a mile's worth, worth of work, and whereas we're doing one mile. And according to their notice of completion, and I'll read straight from it, that they're, the work on said contract commenced on November 2nd, 2009, and was completed, work was found to be accepted on May 12th, 2010. So that's half a mile's worth of work in six months. We're doing one mile worth of work, and we're gonna be substantially complete in three months. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. You can take three months, two months, it doesn't matter. But you make stop the, the traffic, because if you close only one lane, you can do four less than get. But you close two lanes, so that's...
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Point of order?
Well taken, Mr. Beard. Mr. Murray, please?
I, I'm sorry.
Please address the panel.
My, my, my apologies. Anyway, those construction techniques and the type of process that they were following are basically the same. So in terms of our, of our progress, we've, we've done twice as much work in half the time, and we're very proud of that. And I think that that needs to be acknowledged by the community, so hopefully they'll, they'll understand that. And that's basically my update. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
So, and, and Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me chime in. So, you know, we are going to be, we're gonna be tracking this very closely over the next week. We hope to get the, is, you know, the final coding on with one week. We really want to get this done so traffic is flowing free and, and accessibly during the holidays. We know it's an important time. I know Mr. Murray and his staff have been working very hard on this project. It's a complex project, but, you know, we're doing everything we can to try and make it as easy as we can for all the businesses. We know it's tough, we know, you know, it's difficult, and so we're taking this very seriously, and we're trying to get this work done as quickly as possible for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just chime in real fast. I appreciate what Bill and Scott said. Ma'am, we, we were doing other construction in the city, and I was always hounding Mr. Murray, why are we not taking care of Brookhurst? And he's like, it's because the businesses will be impacted. So they have made a concerted effort to work around the entire city to complete what we could possibly before we tackle Brookhurst. And Mr. Murray did advise me beforehand that it would be a very complex project, because we have neglected Brookhurst for such a long time because of the effect on business. And so I do appreciate the bottom line for the business owners, and thank you for being here, but I do want to acknowledge how much effort staff has put in to try to mitigate that damage or that lack of income that you're having. And so it's a tough, you know, push back and forth, but really appreciate staff for working so hard to get things done so, so quickly. Thank you.
Yeah, I definitely echo that, Mr. Phan. Thank you. Mr. Bowie?
I just would like to, you know, say that we do understand the hardship of all of the business along Brookhurst Street. I would be concerned too, because it's clearly affecting a lot of residents as well as business. But most difficult, most difficult be for business, especially for the type of food to go, where they have to pre-cook all of their, their food, so that people can go there and pick and choose. And so at the end of the day, they incur a lot of cost, a lot more cost than, than other restaurants. So, so I can sympathize with, with the pain and the hardship. And we're not trying to say that, that what pain that they're going through is, is, is not real. It is real. And in fact, Mrs. Julie Nguyen, when I visit her recently last weekend, she sold me her bill, Edison bill, where she had been behind for a couple months, and her, her Edison bill is amount to, you know, you know, a few thousand dollar.
A few thousand?
Yeah, and she, she was not able to, to pay it. So I, so I understand the hardship, and I, I bear your pain. But the, but the, I would like the, the community to understand that the city council, the mayor and, and all of the council here pounding on our public work every week. We are pushing as hard as we can so that we can finish ahead of schedule by even days or, or, or a week or two, because we realize that a day save will translate to, you know, less financial loss to, to a particular business. And we're talking about small business here, family-run business. So we, we don't want them to, you know, to, to, to lose it. Now, to answer the, the other request by the president of the Vietnamese-American community that the city council would take this, this issue seriously and by heart, we do take it by heart, and we take it very seriously. For the last five weeks, every single weeks, I power on our, the public director and all the council member also co-op them every week to remind them and pushing as hard as we can. And in fact, in the last three weeks, we had pushed the contractor to work overtime on Saturday.
Every workday.
And, and that is a, an extra cost for that contractor, because when their staff have to work overtime, they have to pay overtimes. And this contract is a fixed price. So, so you can understand that the contractor and the city are trying as, as, as best as we can, because we understand the hardship... because we understand the hardship and the burden, uh, for the business community are real. And they are fighting day to day to survive.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Mr. Beard, did you want to chime in?
Oh, related to this issue, yeah. I think, um, we've had our experiences with major, uh, roadwork done. Valley View comes to mind, that was a long project, it's a worthwhile project. We bear the pain, the businesses did, the residents did, it's all worth it. I mean, citizens are happy it happened, but they weren't happy they went through it. I, I'm sorry to hear about your business, uh, suffering from it. We don't want to see that happen, we try and expedite wherever we can. Kudos to staff for trying to make every effort to expedite all the projects. It's a difficult situation, no question about it. And we will continue as a city to do our best, use our expertise, go out there, reach out, let people know, inform them. We are aware ahead of time that this was going to be, uh, an issue, complaints and people getting back to us. So, um, I'm sorry we're going through it, but we have to go through it. 20 years, uh, long run, short run is difficult and, uh, we apologize for that. No, no questions or dialogue there.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Beard. You know, we do appreciate everyone's patience regarding this and definitely do appreciate staff doing everything you can. And you've been very responsive in responding to all of the complaints that have come to council's attention. So we do appreciate you and we also want to get this project done right. It's supposed to last us about 20 years once it's done. So that would be a benefit to all of us in the city and all those who come to Garden Grove as well. So once again, we, we thank everyone for your patience and bear with us just a little bit more. And we're going to have smooth roads and great, beautiful streets in our city. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowie.
The, uh, mayor, uh, I had, because there's a lot of, uh, perception and a lot of anxiety in the community, I did ask the city manager office to arrange a press conference tomorrow at, at, uh, I believe that 11:00 in the morning.
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM in the morning. And, uh, council member, I would like to you to, and the mayor, I would like you to join us in that press conference if, if your schedule permit.
Mr. Mayor, uh, i- if I could just add, so we, what we'd like to do from an administrative standpoint is to continue to get the word out about what the, what the schedule is. You know, when we, you know, the fact that we are going to be doing everything we can to try and, uh, get this work wrapped up. And we thought it would be good to get the information out. And especially for any of the businesses that have been contacting any of you. You know, we want to help, you know, do that. Councilman Bowie's helped, has agreed to help with any translation of any things that we want to do at the press conference as well. So we're, we, we want to get the information out as, as, as effectively as possible. So we're going to try to do that as, as best we can.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for organizing that. I also want to thank the Vietnamese-language media for helping us get the word out there to the community, especially to the local businesses in our Little Saigon, uh, district in our city. Okay. We have closed session. We're going to adjourn to closed session and I'm not sure if we have anything to report out, but we'll do that when we come back. Okay? But be, actually, you know, before, before we move to closed session, because I'm pretty sure everyone will be gone at that time, as you are unusually. I want to give my colleagues an opportunity to probably, you know, the Thanksgiving wishes and all that. So I'll start with Mr. Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Personally, we have a lot to be thankful for. For me, I have a, a beautiful eight-month-old son and he's jumping around all over the place. We're very blessed and blessings to each and every one of you.
Thank you. Guys, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Thank you.
Just want to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving and, uh, would like to wish the, uh, business along Brookhurst Street, uh, you know, a better selling for the, for this week. I want to mention that, uh, all six lane of Brookhurst Street was opened, uh, earlier this late afternoon. So hopefully we have a, you know, better traffic along Brookhurst.
And a happy Thanksgiving to one and all.
Okay, happy Thanksgiving from City Garden Grove. And before we go to closed session, Mr. Styles?
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just to, um, remind, uh, all of you, I know you have it on your calendars, but members of the community, there's also some important events coming up over the next couple of weeks before our next meeting. December 1st, we have the tree lighting ceremony at Village Green Park at 6:30 PM. I'm looking forward to my first tree lighting ceremony. I'm going to bring my whole family to that. December 5th, uh, we will have Winterfest opening at Atlantis Play Center from 4 o'clock to 7:00 PM. I think December 5th is a Saturday, so that will be a great event. And, uh, December 8th, we will be, right before our council meeting, uh, we will be having, uh, the groundbreaking of the Brookhurst Triangle Project right across from where we spent a lot of time talking about earlier this evening. And that is, that, that groundbreaking will happen at 4:30 PM. So that's terrific news for the city. And then finally, I want to mention, just to get it out, we, you know, have begun some preliminary discussions with the community about the new location for the District 5 Fire Station. We had a first meeting where we sent just a notice out to, specifically to the immediate property owners. We didn't have a large turnout and we're going to be having some follow-up meetings. We're going to be doing some additional, additional noticing to the community. We know that people are interested even if they don't live in the northeast quadrant of the city. But our next meeting, uh, on, on Fire Station 6 will be December 15th, 6:30 PM at Walton Middle School on Waro Street. So, uh, that will be, um, another event that we're planning in conjunction with the Fire Department and our Community Services Department. So just wanted to pass that on and also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Styles. And we're going into closed session. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, we have two items for closed session. One is labor negotiations and the second one is to discuss the Montoya litigation.
Thank you.